This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. It's Tuesday, June 25th. We have our weekly supervisors meeting. It's available by YouTube also and recorded for later date. There's our most, excuse me, agenda in front of us. The motion accepted agenda.
Some of them.
The motion is our second.
Our second.
Second. All families say aye?
Aye.
Oh, motion passes. Approve the minutes of the June 18th meeting and claims.
I'll make the motion.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Is that second? Any other discussion?
Brooke, Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Hi.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Motion passes. County Attorney General discussion.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm staying on my shirt. I know that. Becky's already called my attention to it, so I just don't want people to think I go around purposely wearing sloppy clothes. I don't know what it is. I didn't notice until you mentioned it.
Well, I know, but everybody, Becky is the first thing she looked at, you know, and she's like, oh, you're wearing that. So anyway. Uh, I just look at my phone here. Today's the day, uh, for the KEPPART, uh, is, you know, where I request the, uh, writ from the judge, the writ of removal. I think this, what's the actual times like noon or 12:30 or something like that. So, so I'll do that. Um, doesn't mean you guys gotta do anything today or anything, but in fact, probably wouldn't do anything till I actually say, yeah, you know, we got it. But anyway. Uh, looks like tomorrow I have a meeting with Amanda. Looks like there's gonna be some representatives. I suppose from one of the wind companies are coming. Um, I'm scheduled for that. Last time I think the gentleman that was supposed to come, um, Amanda and I were over here. Um, to me, he had something come up at the last minute. I don't know what it was, but I mean, he couldn't make it. So, um, so it looks like she, Amanda must have worked with Becky or somebody scheduled tomorrow. So, um, I've got that. It's like it's one o'clock. Be over here. Um, so, planning on going to that. Um, Mike, we talked last week about the alley thing along that. And, um, I guess right now that's about all that I can think up specifically. Unless somebody has something for me.
On this KEPPART thing afternoon today, it's ours and we're putting the code out in the paper. I think it's coming out this week. And if somebody goes out and looks at it and bids on it, but some of the stuff's not there when they go clean it up, what do we do?
Well, um, you know, KEPPART, he shouldn't be on there taking anything off. But you're thinking maybe somebody else, Mike?
Well, anybody, I guess.
Right now, I mean, I get it. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's kind of a possibility. Um, you know, I hadn't thought of that. Um, cause I suppose then what's the, I suppose what somebody would do is take some pictures. I mean, if you, you know, if somebody takes a washer or dryer or something, you're probably not gonna be able to tell that so much. Take some pictures of it, Mike, and it could be me. It could be me. It could be one of you guys. You should always share songs. It could be, um, some pictures of it. Of what it looks like. And then if it looks different than somebody, cause I suppose what you're thinking is somebody's either gonna bid, there's gonna be, they're gonna bid on the price of so much cleanup. And then if there ends up being less, right? You're like, well, they, they're not gonna wanna pay. Or on the other hand, somebody might be wanting to take some of that stuff and if some of it's gone, so I, so yeah, see a good point. If you wanted to get really, uh, mentioning about it, you'd put up some tape, tape it off, uh, put up a camera out there and record it. Um, now, if you have to go to that link, I don't know if you do. Might take some pictures ahead of time. Uh, might be worth it to put a sign up there that says no trespassing, anything like that. It wouldn't be a terrible idea. Maybe you have to put a camera somewhere. Um, put a sign up there that says no trespassing. If somebody goes on there, they're trespassing. Yeah. Right? Now, you say, well, how are we gonna know who that is? Well, that's why there was a, uh, way to put a camera up there. I think neighbors around there usually seem to also kinda know what's going on. Um, I don't know if that completely answers your question or not. Gives you a suggestion. You don't know that it necessarily solves the issue, but.
Put up some snow fence on the south side and attach it to all the stuff in the trees just so that, yeah, just that they were gonna go in, they have to take down the fence.
Yep.
Get in there.
Put up, uh, you know, no trespassing.
If you did that, you might as well put it on that north end too, cause there's a drive on the west side of that house that goes behind. There's probably access there. So, if you're gonna do one, you might as well do them both.
And I know, I, I know, you know, there'd be some people, I, I, I mean, I can't get inside other people's heads, but you know, on the one hand, it might be somebody says, why do you make, why does anybody care? Somebody goes in there and takes stuff. And, and, but I would, you know, I'd be like, well, the answer to that would be, um, and I know you guys aren't asking this, but if somebody in the public said, well, you know, why do we care if somebody's taking stuff? I'd say, well, number one, for liability reasons, you don't necessarily just want somebody in there, um, milling around, right? I mean, who knows what's in there? Um, and then like I said, you've got the bidding process that can be affected by it. So, I mean, there are good reasons for, after all this time, saying we want the stuff out. Yes, it's a good reason to say, yeah, we want it out, but we don't want people just going in there and taking stuff out. There are good reasons for not doing that. So, so yeah, if it was, uh, cordoned off, uh, put some no trespassing signs up there. It doesn't necessarily keep anybody out, but it heightens the consequences if somebody goes in, provided we know who they are. And given, uh, it's not that big of a town, uh, the likelihood of somebody seeing them is probably pretty good, even if we're like at night. And then you could also put a, a camera around for it. Um, but you know, I'm just saying this, you know, so everybody in public here, if, you know, after, after that writ issues, I mean, it's county property now, right? County owns it now. The writ was just put off until now to remove him. After that writ issues, um, that one, nobody's supposed to be in there now either, but I mean, I'm just saying that especially after that writ issues, if you, people, nobody should go on that any more than I would walk into your house, right? So, um, and if you, uh, like I said, trespassing signs up, that'd be a trespassing for somebody to go in there. So it's best off just not, if you're a public person, right? Yeah. I'm curious too, but I'm not gonna go walking around. If electricity needs disconnected too. That's still there.
Yeah. Is that a lion?
No, it isn't a lion.
That's a lion?
Yeah.
Yeah, that means, do they post contact them and they all take care of it?
So, I don't know that you're the property owner. Yeah.
It's the best thing. We wake up tomorrow morning, there's an empty lot.
And it's not in our ditches.
Yeah? So.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's a problem that is coming, it'll be good, to a resolution, right?
Correct.
All right. Anybody else have any for that? County Attorney?
Check all the land after the meeting here and see if they'll do it or somebody will do it, I guess.
What's that?
Check all the land, see if they want to book the electricity.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Sure. Okay, I'll do that.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Mike, be around. Anybody need anything?
Sheriff.
I don't have anything for you. Rich probably gonna need some of your time, but I don't have anything. I see you have something for me?
You don't.
Thank you.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department head discussion.
Um, I have a question in regards to Megan that sent us an email about the mental health advocate. I didn't know if anybody had contacted Bayou County about sharing.
I was gonna see what happened today, but I can contact that Janelle if you want. Is that what we wanna do? Go with?
Find out.
Yeah.
See if they would be interested.
Something like the gal would be. We just gotta get on there for what, 20, 80 or maybe back off them.
There was a resolution that was sent to that to us that this board had, uh, put together a number of years ago. Not this board, but the previous board. That would have to be edited and stuff, but, uh, yeah, if you don't want to, you bet.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to make sure if I else is okay with that before. I'll get a hold of her and see if you're going on that so we don't.
Very good.
Any other department head discussion?
Hey, guys. Good morning. So I have resolved two more of the critical issues from the ICET survey that came to there. Also, um, coming up very soon, there's some new expectations for cybersecurity that are coming a little bit in the future. So I, what I wanna do is provide you a list of what's 100% necessary to be in compliance with that and why it has to be that way. And I can provide that to you privately. But that's, it's kind of more a heads up that it's gonna happen because we're gonna be forced to do it. MFA, for example. I mean, that's just an expectation at this point. But I'll provide all that information and give you, um, everything you need to know about how and why those things are coming through. It can, uh, obviously MFA, nobody totally likes it when they have to get their phone out and put in another code. But that's just an example of something that's coming down the pipeline. And I like to stay ahead of it instead of, you know, it's a month before and we're scrambling with that sort of stuff. Really, I just wanted to let you know about that since that's coming up soon. Did anybody have any questions?
The MFA, is that just when we open our email as a visit bulk or is it with each individual email that comes in, it has to be?
It's not each individual. Um, there, there's different requirements from the sheriff's side of it, CIJS, and then there's different requirements on the courthouse side that have to be adhered to. So, um, it, without getting into boring IT talk, you can make it minimally disruptive.
All right.
And that's my goal is 100% because that's better for you and it's better for my time. You know what I mean? So it'll be, I've done the implementations before in larger organizations and as long as you teach everybody out and make sure everybody knows what's going on, it generally goes pretty well. Any more questions?
So since Brian is up here, I'm just gonna suggest, um, my printer in the back that prints color for us is toast. It's done for Brian so that we can get a new printer. If you guys thought we could. I think we have 600 and some dollars left in our.
That printer is not what you would consider a business class printer. That's kind of like a home inkjet printer. I would suggest definitely going into something in the laser category, cause there's far less that could go wrong. There's less parts than in an inkjet printer. And I would think for $600, I could provide a replacement that's significantly better than that.
Have a document feeder, scan and print color also.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the nice thing about that.
Good. Yeah, we could absolutely do that.
By June 30th?
Yeah. I can get the invoice to you. Yeah.
So if you guys, okay, cause I do appreciate printing in color. So I could see things.
Most people appreciate that, yeah.
I, I really do.
I, I understand.
Since that has been working, I've been printing at home.
Oh, no.
That's not a problem at home.
I guess I never used that when I was printing on the other.
Unless you guys don't see the need for it, but I, I do use it a lot.
I like to print color. Most times I like color printing.
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. I'll get, uh, I'll get going on that right away.
You and I will have to discuss the VPN for the HVAC project. The, the credentials that were sent out are, are not working for individuals. And it, it appears that there's, uh, communication problems between the two buildings, the courthouse and the jail. They can access one side, but then it's like a firewall that just stops them to go to the other side. So that will have to be figured out and, uh, it, as soon as we can actually, because we're to the part where the system is operational and fine tuning has to be done. And the only way they can fine tune is, is to get into the controls, see the set points, see how things are running. But they can't do it through the cloud. They have to actually come here and, and hook up directly to do that. So, so we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, one of the gentlemen is coming Thursday.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'll just help him in person.
Is that Zach or is that, is that, you know?
I, I don't remember.
Is there off the top of my head? Controls guy or is it, you know, the contractor, Randy or?
Yeah, Randy. That was it. It was an R, I know. So yeah, it was Randy. So we have that set up on Thursday to get that totally done. And then the other gentleman, I hope I can do the same thing or meet him. I just wanna do it in person.
Yes.
To be 100% sure. That's my goal.
I think that's what it has to be now as far as ask them, is it working? And they say yes or they say no. And so there's, uh, Dave needs it. Randy needs it. Zach from the control needs it. And then Midwest Engineering, they've changed their name. They got purchased. I don't know their new name, but so there's four or five individuals that are gonna need those credentials.
Okay. Well, I'll, uh, I'll confirm in person the most that I can, then actually see that it's working.
Yeah.
On those, that's good for both of us, for both of us. So that's what I'll do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I'm the engineer update. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I was probably lying. I think somebody wasn't ready to talk about. First off, we had bids last week. I didn't get it on the agenda. I didn't get a chance to review them. Um, for the, in those projects we had, we have Lionkill and, uh, that Orchard Road. I'll bring that in for next week's agenda if you wanna put that on there. But the apparent little bidder was Hartland asphalt.
They went out for bids already on those projects, sir.
The, yeah, we did, yeah, we were kind of running behind. So they were June letting. They'll be done, uh, this year, but that was just the Lionkill Road and, uh, and that little stretch on Orchard Road there.
I didn't know they were designed yet.
Oh, yeah. No, they were, yeah, we were, yeah. Those were done. Now we've gotta start working on the truck route and the other stuff for next year. Still gotta get those closed out. So I'll bring that information to you guys next week. They were under the engineer's estimate at least, so that's a good thing. We did purchase the ripper that I kinda handed you guys last week for the, uh, remote reader. So we'll get that booked to use. That'll show up probably, I don't know if the invoice will show up next claim session. So it'll be in July. And then finally the flooding, um, I think we, I guess we fared better than most. I think Northeast Corner probably had the most damage, if you wanna call it damage. It's more scouring roads and, and things like that when water naturally goes over. It was our flash flooding that did everything, but then the, uh, the flooding from Minnesota that came down through the cedar and the little cedar things, that did, did more damage. I think the biggest stuff that we have right now, you know, I think yesterday the guys got most everything fine tuned. They're finishing stuff up today on, on the gravels. Um, we lost, well, we didn't lose, uh, River Road's still closed. Um, there's a lot of slop on it. There's a lot of trees laying across the road. So that'll take us some time. I'm, I'm expecting the water to probably be down by the end of the day, the way as fast as it's going down. I was only able to access a couple of parts this morning even to see what was going on. But I'm not sure yet. I mean, I couldn't see the deeper parts, but the typical spots that flood are still underwater. Uh, then the other, other kind of major thing over by San Ansgar where, uh, the, uh, 420th down by the lagoon, um, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you wanna look at it, the, uh, the location where they had crossed 420th with that new sewer line. I'm guessing part of it was because it was freshly compacted material, but it undermined half of the road there. So the patches they put in, the, the bumpy patch is actually suspended by nothing. So, and I think it actually might've settled about a quarter of an inch. So, um, trying to talk with the, with the consultant that did the work to find out what the patches are, whether we remove the patches, fill it back in, or if we spend the money on, on using flowable grout to, to fill in the whole void so that we don't have to worry about settlement in the future. But we do have some adjacent panels that are probably gonna have to be replaced because they are hovering and have collapsed on themselves. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things that washed out underneath, but it went, ironically, it went right to the center line of the road in that patch section. So it's kinda weird how it did that. But, so we'll keep that, uh, we've got that open for one lane right now. And I'll get some more information from their, from the consultant that worked with the city of San Ansgar, get some information to make a decision whether we take a lot of concrete out and patch it. I think right now, I don't think, I don't know that's for sure, but I don't know that we were in the declaration for the flood. I know Worth County, I think, shot it. I don't know if we did or not. I haven't checked the site and I don't know if anybody else has heard of it. So, um, we're still acting as though we could potentially be put in it. So we're documenting everything, but it'd kinda nice to know. I, you know, we don't have, I would say we don't even have a half a million dollars in damages. So I mean, it's probably even less than, and maybe even a quarter of a million. I don't even know if we have that much. So sometimes it's easier just to kinda be left out of it and take care of ourselves and to go through all the paperwork for, we spend more time and money in our office trying to chase it than we do just to get the work done. So, we'll see if they're doing anything more with declarations. I know right now they're more worried about it than, as they should be more worried about Western Iowa, Northwestern Iowa, where all the major damages. So, anyway. Flooding wasn't terrible, but we're getting our stuff straightened out. So. Any other questions?
Okay. Uh, I'm not quite familiar right now with that 420th. That isn't the patch that you were gonna grind down and it is.
It might've, it might've naturally ground itself down. There's a separation at some line. Although I thought they tied them together. They should've maybe dolled them, but I don't, you know, just nature does some crazy things. So they might've had dowels on center line, but that doesn't mean it can't sign itself. So we'll take a look at it and see. But for now, we'll get some information from them and find out whether it was, I don't remember. It was a fully reinforced, patch with a, with a rebar mat in it or it was just doubled on the ends. So I'll get that information and we'll make a decision whether or not we take everything back out and just report it. There's some adjacent panels, like I said, on one side and there's some on the other side. We might be able to fix a lot more just because it's closed now.
Hey, Rich. Rich Olson with Emergency Management. I got a call into your office and as well as Mike Minor's Conservation Office, wondering about estimated damages. Our county threshold is just over 48,000.
Oh, okay.
More than that, we can, uh, apply for, uh, public assistance and declare Mitchell County a disaster.
Okay. I'll check into it. We could probably be pushing that, I guess, maybe with the amount of rock and man hours. We'll see. But yeah, we'll get something to you. Well, you mean, okay, between conservation and us, yeah, we should be able to meet that easy.
Sounds good. Homeland Security wants that by 72 hours after the disaster occurs, but I told them we're with waters to reseed to get accurate.
I'm gonna get on it.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing like more deadlines in short period. Yeah, okay.
Conservation probably has that in itself.
Yeah, they, they at least have that.
Do they reimburse 100% or is it percentage?
Um, yeah, they, I don't remember. I think if, if we document it, they reimburse us for what we have.
Mr. Orin? I got a question. Did you give the contractor to put the patch in on the street specifications to follow so that it wouldn't be built the way you wanted it to?
I don't know.
Where does that come from?
It might've come either from Subas or just the standard road plans.
We've got drone footage of that flood. It definitely was a flood.
Yep.
In that area where it crossed the road, it was about 150 feet long, not just.
Yeah, not just.
That happened to be the low spot in the road.
Yeah. No, I'm not picking on them. They didn't do anything wrong with the scour.
It wasn't built in proper.
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. No, it was freshly backfilled and I think.
I want to thank you and your crew for coming and taking care of this. Quitting to.
I think it was just a fresh backfill, so there wasn't a lot of vegetation established in natural, I think. So, no, they didn't do anything wrong. It wasn't nothing that they did that caused it, you know, anything out of the ordinary. Just Mother Nature.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Approve the 24, 25 salary certification resolution. Resolution 1222-24. Your lane. Wage increases.
I move to approve resolution 1222-24.
And launches our talk. Second. Any other discussion?
Brooke, Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. And then we have approved the 24, 25 budget appropriation resolution, resolution 1223-24.
Move to approve resolution 1223-24.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Brooke, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Motion passes. Discussion possible action on infill lot application for Jordan Savannah Nelson. Infill lot. We got pictures, plans for a new house.
Yeah, they're requesting them mom's of $10,000. It looks like Mayor's digging is gonna be doing the work. Um, they've submitted everything that I need at this time.
The motion that's, uh, infill lot.
Motion.
The motion is our second.
I'm second.
Any other discussion?
Brooke, Sidney, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Discussion of possible action on infill lot application for Neil and Michelle.
Yeah, they're all requesting again the $10,000. Um, Lewis, Lewis Construction is gonna be doing the work. Um, and again, I received all the people that I need at this time.
We have a motion accept the infill lot. Move to. The motion is our second. Any other discussion?
Brooke, Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So it looks like you guys approved $50,000 a few weeks ago towards the program. So thanks for doing that. Um, and then after all of these, the balance is $52,065.
Thank you.
For a new year.
52, 065.
Yep. You can have this if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want this?
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Jenny.
Hey, it's Urban Renewal Financing Update. Discussion with North Securities.
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good. Uh, well, the board, uh, passed an urban renewal plan that had some projects in it, just, um, just in the amount of about four, four million dollars. So, uh, the next steps in the plan is when you do an urban renewal plan is then you go ahead and start those financing processes that include, uh, a hearing and then going into, uh, the internal loan process and then the outside funding process. So today, really what I wanted to do is give an update of a timeline of some of the steps that the board will be taking in order to go into that financing for the 4 million, 32,000. Um, give an update of how those numbers were kind of, uh, come up with. No action is being taken today. It's really just. It's really just getting the board, hey, here's the plan of finance. Here's the meetings that'll be coming up to date. And then any questions kind of going through. So the board should have a folder in front of them and Rachel will have one as well. I have a spreadsheet if somebody else needs one, but I'll just go ahead and go first with just this calendar of the events that we have. This is a calendar for both the internal loan and then also the proposed TIF revenue corporate purpose bonds for 2024 for the full 4.32 million. Starting on July 16th, we'll have your bond attorney provide you with a set, to set a date for a finance hearing. That will be also for the internal loan as well as the external loan. On July 30th, then you'll hold that public hearing and have a resolution to go ahead and proceed with that financing. You'll also have an internal loan resolution adopted so that after that resolution is adopted, then you can go ahead and do the internal loan proceedings to go ahead and move those funds into the capital project fund and then into the various departments for capital projects that are listed in that plan. This is looking, we're looking from that standpoint, from the internal loan process, that loan will be completed after that July 30th date. Then the next steps after that will be based off of the external financing that we're looking to do a private placement with a local bank. Go ahead and get that term sheet, which will put together the, all the details of the financing, the principal and interest, the term. It'll all be disseminated out to the banks so that those rates can come back and the board can then approve and lock in that interest rate on August 20th. One week later, you'll have one other resolution, which is called an issuance resolution. Again, provided by Dorsey and Whitney will put together the full final documents of that, which will put everything into a legal form. It's not approving anything new, puts in everything in a legal form, gives you a clear to close. So after that, it's the last board action and looking to close by September 12th. So looking at having that full $4 million, $32,000 basically in two pieces by September 12th of this year.
Are you the middle person for Dorsey and Whitney? Or is there any time that we need to reach out to them to do something?
So assuming there's no questions or changes to this timeline, I'll disseminate this to Dorsey. I'll copy in Rachel and if you would like a board member coming in. And then we'll go ahead and move forward. Dorsey typically will provide those titles the week before and then all of the documents usually by Friday. So those can go into the haggis for your Tuesday meetings.
Good. Do you have an estimated cost of this project or not?
Estimated cost of, so the total borrowing is allowable is the $4 million, $32,000. That's in the urban renewal plan.
I mean, the cost of legal fees, your fees, everybody's fees.
So yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll get into that a little more detail. Kind of wanted to talk through how I've broken it up and then we'll get through to that. But yeah, that's a good question. Then I have a sheet for your readers. If you have some readers who need to see, I've got some small numbers here. Just an estimate of where your wind TIF revenues have been and where they're expected to be. So we're looking at the fiscal year. You'll see that black line for the fiscal year that's starting here. Just July 1. I have some conservative estimates for that Phase 3 revenue. Just one is it's still in its first few years where there can, there can be an adjustment. And then also with the legislature has said that there is limits on how much you can grow, how much you can grow, which could in turn affect a consolidated tax rate of a township. So I do, I have left that Phase 3, that's still setting up fairly conservative. Just because we know that there are some outside, there are some outside things that could cause what a regular projection is expected to be. So just from a wind standpoint, estimating for fiscal year 2025, about 3.2 million. After your bond payments, that you just have three outstanding right now, we're looking at doing an internal loan as well as that private placement I have listed here to include your TIF payment of about 3.3. We'll do just a small drawdown of that overall TIF balance. However, within the next year, two years, you'll see that that TIF balance will be growing significantly. Did look to see if we could do your external loan within two years of paying it off. However, with conservatively, I wanted there to be some additional TIF revenue from the wind if the board wishes to continue on with the urban renewal plan projects, some new ones. And then also just to have additional cushion with that TIF revenue.
So you're looking at, is it a two, is it a payback in two years or?
It'll be three years. It'll be three years.
Okay. All right. So internal loan 1.6 and then the?
I do have a 5% in that as well. So that any of the funds that are being borrowed from will receive 5% interest coming back into those funds for that, for the gap too. So any funds that would be borrowed are getting kind of that little bit of a boost that the TIF revenues would allow.
What fund would that internal loan come out of?
Yeah, next page. You're going right where I'm going, Mike. I love it. I've taken a look at all of the funds. I know there's a question is, you know, you have approximately $11 million. Can we internally borrow the whole thing? And that answer is a lot of those funds are designated and restricted. So I've taken a look at, you know, all of those funds that you've had. And I've kind of narrowed it down between three funds that we'll take a look at. One, I wanted them to, one, relate to the projects that you're actually doing the urban renewal projects to. You don't want to be borrowing from, you know, you can, but it's likely that you want to borrow from the funds that you're actually using first and then look at what's legally available. So looking at your general basic, a portion of your general basic, even in your auditing, in your audit, is restricted. So that amount is about, we're looking at about 2.5 million at the end of this year. For your budget that was just passed for fiscal year 2025, that total budget of expenditures is 6.3 million. To ensure an entire carryover of at least 35%, you want to have at least 2.2 million in there. And so you're looking at, you know, kind of, it'd be about $375,000, but put that down to about $350,000 that you'll internally borrow from general. Secondary roads, we're looking $500,000 and then just above $750,000 to kind of round out to 1.6 million for internal loan. I have a bond service, debt service schedule, which will just estimate that remainder of that $4 million, $32,000. We're looking at $2,430,000 with principal and interest estimated at about 5.25% for that short-term financing. Do know that short-term, a short-term financing is higher actually than long-term financing right now because of, because of where the Fed has raised those rates. Now certainly, even if you did stretch this out 10 years, you're going to be paying more interest because of the effects of the time. But did want to kind of note that short-term, short-term rates are a little bit higher than long-term rates. If you're looking at the 10-year treasury right now, that's about a 4.5. The two years a 4.85, so.
So your estimated interest on this will be $241,000?
Yes. All to be paid back with TIF and that TIF revenue, so.
This doesn't include the internal loan, right, interest? No.
No, that internal loan interest will come from the TIF revenues. So it's not going to be paid back to any investor. It's going to just come from that TIF fund and then transferred right into general local option secondary. Then the last page here, this is, this is rough, but rough, but I put together just the projects that were in the fund. Certainly if the board has any indication of which projects you'd like to be more in the internal borrowing versus the external borrowing, we have the ability to move those around. I took my best guess on what we, you know, what we want to not pay interest to any type of local, any type of investor. But this just shows where the funds will come from in each of those.
The, we talked about this before the meeting, so, but the conservation, I know they want to do it. They're rough and they'd like to get going on that. So the question was, can they expend those funds out of the general fund? And then will the general fund get paid back when September happens?
When, when would you expect the first bill to be coming in for that?
I know they'd like to get moving on it, so I would bet end of July.
End of July.
That's just a guess on my part. I don't know. I know they want to get moving on it.
Okay. So that answer is yes. So if it's end of July that you're expecting that first bill, we're looking at, we're within a 60-day mark of closing on the fund. So whether it's internal or external, I'm not seeing that you'd have to have any type of reimbursement resolution in addition, but you can expend it out of the general and then pay it back with either the internal or the external funds. If you think that you're going to be having any expenditures prior to July 12th, we just want to have a reimbursement resolution up at your next meeting. So to make sure that you can reimburse yourself with the external proceeds, which have special laws associated with it because it's tax exempt financing. But certainly, absolutely you can. Then Rachel, if there's anything that's going to say you're going to be paying approximately before July 12th, we'll just add a resolution into this timeline.
There's two departments that get funded by the auditor's office. The first session in July, one of them is the Fair Board. And it would be half of their budget, it would be 17.5. And then the second session, the auditor's office pays economic development. So it depends on when those claim sessions happen in July. But even if it does happen, you're saying a resolution can be drafted to?
Yeah, to make sure that it would, you could use the private, the private loan.
Okay. All right.
Keeping you on the straight and narrow.
Rachel?
Now I was just wondering what percent of role these TIF projects might be used.
It might be spelled out in the, the governor's office. Might be spelled out in the urban renewal plan, but I don't remember exactly every word. Your urban renewal plan.
They were all designated urban renewal projects in the urban renewal plan from a legal standpoint. And if there was any economic, those are detailed out in that plan. I don't, I actually don't have a copy of that.
I can't remember the whole plan word for word, so.
So, I don't know. I was just kind of computing. So the interest on the internal, external loan will be $241,993. So then the internal loan is 1.6.
Yeah, so you're looking at about $65,000.
$65,000 interest?
Going back into the, yeah, into the department. So, you know, you're not charting, you're not hurting your own funds. You're, you're, $65,000 coming back in.
Going back in and you took out.
But if, yeah. But $2,430,000 is $241,000 worth of interest. 1.6 is going to be?
It's paid off earlier than the, than the external.
So it could be, oh, it's paid off sooner?
It's paid off sooner.
Oh, okay, that's why.
That's why, that's why it's less, yeah.
Okay. All right, because otherwise it'd be another, another 160,000.
Yeah, and the thought behind that is making those, making your funds whole quicker. So you're, you know, you're not worrying from a cash flow perspective. But these numbers that were put together were very conservative. You know, you still have, you know, that $11 million in the bank. So it's, that 1.6 million should not, you know, put you in a cash strap situation.
And then you don't know what attorney fees are and all that.
You know, so the attorney fees, you know, I'll let them go ahead and finish, finish that up. But I mean, you know, you're, you know, we're looking at two loans. If you're just looking at like the legal fees, you're probably not. And don't hold me to it because I'm not.
Yeah, all right.
But you know, probably between 20 and 25,000.
And then your fees are what, 2% of yours there?
We're probably looking at about a 1.2%.
And those, they can also be paid by the TIF, correct?
They can be paid back by the TIF, yes.
Yeah, TIF is property tax money. It's all taxable. Which pocket you're taking. I was just trying to see a total cost of what this costs as a whole.
And I'll go ahead and put more preliminary numbers that detail everything out. Today was more just, here's the plan. And then we'll put detailed numbers, a plan of finance actually at the time of your hearing. And then we'll, and then your August 20th will finalize everything, so.
No, I was just trying to get a rough idea of what.
Any other questions?
Thanks for driving us.
We'll go ahead and if there aren't any questions, I'll, we'll be passing this information off to Dorsey. And then for the set hearing date, that should be pretty straightforward, you're just setting a date, I'll jump onto the Zoom to make sure there aren't any questions at that time. But it's kind of this, getting you forward, taking those next steps, so.
Do let us know when we need to do something, you did here, but just be in contact with us, so.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Next item, meetings attended.
North Iowa Juvenile Detention Meeting. Thanks, Heidi. I think it's going to be a short meeting, but it ended up being quite lengthy simply because of the MCOs, managed care organizations are not very good at reimbursing for expenses that happen in a lot of aspects of this, this facility and others. What's been happening with North Iowa Juvenile Detention is they've been borrowing out of their building maintenance fund in order to keep those going, and they have roughly $300,000 that has not been reimbursed to them from the managed care organizations. There's three of them that they work with. One of them has been kind of a 60-40 pay. They maybe pay 40% of what they're actually supposed to pay. The other two have paid zero and they're constantly on them, but they just simply won't pay. That question, that topic kind of got into if the state of Iowa is doing things properly with the way they're restructuring and everything, and is the system actually working or not? So it was a very big conversation. They wanted to make it clear that ECS and CSS, which is Eastern County, Eastern Social Services and County Social Services, they are not the problem. Those social services is very good at reimbursing and actually helping things move along for the future to make everything work. So they want to make that quite clear. Let's see here, what else? There's been a question in regards to North Iowa Juvenile Detention starting to have adult holds, meaning adults using the facility in the same manner that the juveniles use the facility. And the director has some major concerns about that because he doesn't really feel comfortable with an adult, mainly with a 12-year-old, for examples that everybody can kind of understand, he's just not comfortable with that. So we all, his recommendation as far as we're not going to do that, not going to move to the direction of adult holds also. Now, they do have part of the facility for adults, but it's not in the same location as where the juveniles are. North Iowa Juvenile Detention has currently 15 members. There's two counties that requested to join them, but they, if it was allowed, they would be considered a non-voting county because he wants to take care of the 15 counties that are actually members right now, rather than getting to be too big and then you start having to deny people from counties that are members. So if, if those two counties were considered, they'd be ongoing members and people that are members would have rights to the beds as needed. That's pretty much it for that, so that's all I have.
County Social Service meeting, two ladies retiring and they're not going to replace them until we see what happens with redistricting of the maps. And they showed the three maps and they're supposed to pick one by the end of July, which way we're going to go. And then the Heartland Insurance meeting, and they gave the final rates for the premium and they came in way lower than expected. So the money that we're saving will go into our cert plus, Heartland Insurance, next year. Said pretty good.
At a MCDC meeting, into the treasures and financial reports, we had Elijah Bloom, marketing strategist, a local individual, came to come and talk about our website, got some good ideas, childcare coalition, discussion on, quite lengthy on that. And that pool, that pool housing, we didn't really talk a lot on that.
We just discussed an options, we're just trying to figure out where we used to get the housing.
Standard, yeah, for more housing in Mitchell County. And, well, then we approved the infillots today here, so we had discussion and action on those, so that's it.
Did you get a house plan for that one?
Yes, Johnson.
And if you want, I can send you a copy or you can come get a copy or come look at it.
Fourth monthly monthly fees of $2,792.06. So notice, I guess. I'm in our management plan update.
Junction North, 4885 Winfall Avenue, Riceville, Larry Beeson Farm, 2090 State Line Street, Staceyville, and Long South Finisher Farm, 4602 Shadow Avenue, Staceyville.
Perfect. Public comments, Mr. Horgan?
Once more, I'd just like to thank the County Rugby Department and the Sheriff's Department for helping with control over the blood situation. They were very responsive for this issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other public comment? During the meeting at 9:27.